Hi, good evening. Welcome to a special planning commission meeting Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. I now call this meeting to order. Will you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes.
Denise, will you please call roll?
Sure. Good evening. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Clement?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
Commissioner Shagley?
Here.
Commissioner Doss?
Maz?
Maz?
Here.
I don't have my paper, sorry. Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Was that everybody?
I didn't say you, did I? Did I?
Okay, thank you. We're all here. Patrick, do we want to introduce our new commissioner before we get started?
Certainly. So at the February, one of the February council meetings, Dustin Maz was appointed by council to fill the vacancy that council member Smith created when he got elected to council. So Dustin is our newest member. Had a little conversation with him a couple of weeks ago, instructed him to be expecting an agenda for tonight's meeting, although we thought it was going to be the regular meeting last week as opposed to a special meeting tonight. So everyone, please welcome Dustin.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you enjoy your time on the commission. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes from the January 22nd, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Were there any corrections to the minutes? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no corrections, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as written.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second, thank you.
Okay. Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Maz?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Hi.
There's just a lot of us up here tonight. It's not usually like this. Okay, moving on. Item 4A is a public hearing. Planning Commission Resolution 01, Series of 2020. A resolution of the, feels like I skipped something. Anyway, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Canyon City, Colorado recommending approval of the Canyon City area for reinvestment expansion urban renewal plan. I now open this public hearing. The provisions of the city municipal code and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Are we having a staff report or a presentation?
There will be a presentation this evening. Let me first introduce Ryan Stevens, our city administrator, and I believe Ryan will be turning the floor over to this lady here, Ann Cunningham.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, just a brief introduction. Urban renewal authorities are a tool to help with reinvestments, especially in commercial and industrial areas. It's a tool that's used by, you know, cities as large as Denver to, you know, as small as La Junta or Lamar. So there's a wide range of communities that utilize this tool, and it's something that we would like to make available for property owners and to really encourage reinvestment and help close some of those financial gaps that we see when we have business opportunities and development opportunities come to the city and they, you know, sometimes they're really close and they need a tool to help push them over the edge, and this is that tool. And with that being said, want to introduce Ann Ricker with Ricker Cunningham. They are the consultants that are helping us with the condition survey and forming this urban renewal plan.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. I would say over the edge in a good way, like over the finish line, just based on my experience. Very quickly, just so you know who I am, I've been doing, working on urban renewal projects from plans through helping authorities finance redevelopment projects to working on those redevelopment projects as a liaison between the authority and/or community for over 30 years. Interesting, I'm glad Ryan mentioned a couple of things. I'll just throw out these stats. I hadn't thought about it before, but in case it's new to any of you, there are right now about 55 urban renewal authorities in the state of Colorado, about 45 are active. The statute's been in place since 1953, but there was a big surge of activity in the 70s, things kind of tapered off, and then another kind of spurt in the 80s, 90s, and since then. We've worked for over 75% of the urban renewal authorities and prepared over 100 between condition surveys, urban renewal plans and that. And I only tell you that just because I've pretty much got the statute committed to memory, but I'm not an attorney, so I'm always willing to answer a question, but with a big caveat that I'm not an attorney. But I've been doing this a long time. I was the one from our practice that did complete and prepare your condition survey and your urban renewal plan. There's a third piece of this, and I'll kind of explain that to you, which is a series of impact reports. And basically, those are financial reports that you prepare for any taxing entity with a presence in the area that you're considering for designation. So that can be the city, obviously, the county, it can be parks and rec districts, library districts, things like that. My partner prepared those, although I have a lot of experience in that area too, just in case you have questions. One thing I'm going to share with you is some of those basics up front, and then there's a slide where I'm going to specifically talk to you about, and I'm going to read from the statute, this is where I always apologize to planning commission members, what it says your role is just in the capacity of approving this plan. I was talking to Commissioner Smith a little bit before the meeting started. Urban renewal, they call it a plan, and it is, but as you may have seen, and as you'll come to know, it's very much more a financing plan than a plan that you guys would think about. I've worked on corridor plans, I've worked on comprehensive plans and downtown revitalization strategies, all of that. That's kind of what got me here because this became kind of a critical funding element of all of that. And there, that's really your purview. And in this instance, you will continue exactly in the same capacity for any project that comes forward for consideration and approval and entitlement within this area, just as if it wasn't in this area. It's just that by being in this area, if council decides to adopt the plan and that, they'll have additional financial resources to help them advance projects. You know, there's, the statute's fairly general in terms of how they say authorities can help because it says it has to provide a public benefit. To kind of cut to the chase, the essence of what the statute says is if some, and this is really for private sector development, although cities, communities use it to prepare complete many capital improvement projects too. But it's, it's really the difference between providing assistance to make a project feasible that otherwise would not be because of extraordinary conditions, adverse conditions. The infrastructure isn't there and the cost of having to do that on top of your development would be onerous versus the thing people always said lining the developers' pockets. That's not what this is. So the statute does preclude that. This really is about, without raising taxes, finding a way to mitigate and eliminate adverse conditions in an area such that private interests, private property owners, private business interests can invest and reinvest in their property. Okay, so that was just kind of a quick intro. So tonight, and this will go fairly quickly, although I am here to answer any question if I'm going too fast, or you want me to stop on a slide, you know, with the chair's permission, I'm happy to do that either all at the end or as we're going. So we're going to hit just key process milestones, just so you understand where this meeting is in that process. And then I'm going to explain from the statute your role this evening. Something that would obviously come up from a group like yours, how did you decide on this area? And I'll tell you, I didn't, and Ryan and your staff did, and I'll explain it, but if you have specific questions about that, they're here to answer. The urban renewal plan, and that's really your purview, even though it's the financing document, I'm going to remind you a little bit, I, you know, you may not have had a chance to read it cover to cover, I'm just going to kind of hit the high points, the essence of it, and then we're going to just provide you with the next few important dates, and then again, any additional questions. So this is the, what I call the milestones, and I said urban renewal planning is a process of threes because it's really true. There's, it's interesting, there's really three phases to what we do. There's the pre-planning phase, and that's what Ryan was involved with before we ever came on board. That's where he was receiving inquiries from private sector property owners and developers saying, you know, I want to make these improvements, I can't make the numbers work, can you help me? Can the city participate in any way? So it was just saying, what are our circumstances that might be making that investment in feasible? And what are the resources we either have or don't have to kind of close that gap? And in there too, was also defining the boundaries of this area, and you'll see that that's very much informed by all of the work that either you did or your predecessors did, because this is all about advancing community plans. And then also just notifying the other taxing entities with an interest in this area, that the city is considering doing something like this, and will be reaching out to share all this information with them and dialogue, and really the goal is to make sure everybody, even though these resources are getting pooled, that they're going back out and benefiting all interested parties. So that was pre-planning. The planning phase, which we just wrapped up, was the preparation of the documents. And you'll see that I bolded the three, this is the second three theme. This is where I always say that urban renewal, kind of the planning process and the documents you're required by the statute to prepare, is really like a three-legged stool. Literally, you have to prepare these three documents to even get in front of council for them to even consider creating this mechanism and establishing an urban renewal area. And the first is the survey, and that's where we just do an independent review, physical review, field work, review of second and third level information sources to, you know, to identify and quantify and be able to describe, and I think you got that report too, what are the factors in this area as they relate to the statute that might qualify this area? I don't render the area eligible for urban renewal, that's actually a formality that happens by city council at the public hearing, but I offer my objective opinion based on my experience, my observations and my study. And then we prepare the urban renewal plan, that's why we're here tonight, and then again, those impact reports. And then the third phase is the negotiation phase, and that's really going on right now and prior to the public hearing. Okay, so after those impact reports were prepared, and even though Ryan and your urban renewal and city attorney notified those entities that this was something the city was considering, they circle back with them and they share these impact reports, and they say, this is what we're looking at in terms of what the potential of this area is in terms of what it could generate. This is what we observe to be broken or adverse in the area, and these are some of those things that might be even affecting you, you know, whether it's a fire district or, you know, whatever, a water conservation or whatever. This is how much we think by pooling our resources we can generate in revenue, and, you know, if this plan goes forward and gets adopted, we will be back in touch with you to advise you of kind of our progress going on and making sure that everybody's on board and partnering in this thing, you know, shoulder to shoulder. So all of that's kind of going on now. What happened about, I think it was, it went into effect in January 2016, but in the 2015 state legislative session, they made an amendment to that 1953 statute, although I will tell you it was amended many, many times prior to that. But that right there, it was called House Bill 1348, and what that did was, it made it imperative that you get some sort of confirmation from those taxing entities. Again, I can tell you after 30 years of doing this, more than 30 years of doing this, that every one of my urban renewal authority clients had gone out and met and provided written information and dialogued with the taxing entities. House Bill 1348 just memorialized that for anybody who, for whatever reason, might want to circumvent that. Again, that was not my experience, but, you know, it really didn't change my practice at all. But what it did do, and actually what I liked a lot about it, was it went from being a council that was either comprised of the local city council or board and said, we're going to add additional seats, and it made an additional seat available to a county representative, a school district representative, and then one representative that could be identified by the collective of the other taxing entities. So it could be library, it could be rec center, it could be water conservation, it could be a cemetery district, you know, whatever, but they decide. And that brought them even closer, instead of just going out and continually making them prized of what was going on. It made them part of the decisions about what's the highest priority thing we have to fix, you know, are we really advancing the goals of the community? So I've seen that work really well ever since it happened. So that, that was really the big change then. You can see too, in this process and what we're, what's bolded tonight, is it's required by the statute prior to the public hearing, and you'll see that on the last slide, which is currently scheduled for, to begin at least on Monday, March 16th. We need to check in with you guys and say, as it relates to the plan itself, and as it references community plans that you've prepared or charged people with preparing your comprehensive plan, the corridor plan, the vision plan, any plan or policy document that touches this area or could influence this area in some way, we just need to, you know, touch base with you and say, is there anything in here that's in conflict with what you are attempting to accomplish in those areas? And to recognize too, and that's why Ryan wanted to make sure, Ann, Patrick, that you understood this was there, that while your role will continue, you hopefully will then look at this as the implementation arm of those planning documents. This brings resources to further your objectives that, as they're documented in those plans, and that is exactly what it's intended to do. So again, the statutory reference, you know, I don't want to read to you guys, I bolded the most important part, and you can see the reference within the statute there if you guys want to, you know, study that later. But basically, what it says is, and this is in the capacity of getting the urban renewal plan to council for consideration, it says that the urban renewal plan, and quote, "the governing potty," so we're essentially doing this on behalf of council, shall submit such plan to the planning commission of the municipality, if any, there actually are some cities without, for review and recommendations as to its conformity with the general plan for development of the municipality as a whole. And then it goes on, and, you know, Patrick will tell you that at the end, they do have a resolution for you guys to, you know, agree to or not. Some communities, and you can see from the language, aren't as formal as that, nothing's wrong, it's all right. Some just write a letter and say, we're okay. I can tell you, in the hundred and some I've done, I can't think of one where planning commission didn't, well, that wasn't, you know, didn't say it was consistent, or if, if there was something that they at least didn't document it. So, you know, it seems to, you know, they seem to understand kind of what the role is at least at this stage, but again, these guys have chosen to formalize it, that's always good too. But just for you to kind of sign off and let them know that, yes, this is consistent with those planning documents. And the one thing I wanted to mention here is I know that your plan was last done in '01, some updates, and I know you've gone out to bid to update it, and I would expect that the next question is, well, if it's that old, how could it be consistent? And so there's, there's two key things there. One is, we, well, in the appendix, we referenced all the places in the comprehensive plan, the one that exists today, where we thought this urban renewal plan could advance certain elements of that. We really emphasized in the body of the plan, or at least we tried to, the more current planning documents that you guys have solicited. So the US-50 corridor plan, the vision plan, the strategic plan, and really brought those into the body of the report to make sure, you know, those are the most recently done, they're probably the most current thinking for the most representative people, and so that's why we pulled it up there, but we also referenced the others. So that's one thing. The second thing is, we put in language very carefully, and this is lawyer-tested, that we said, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and all future updates. Okay, and that's key. And what that means is, and you'll see this in the presentation tonight too, I emphasize that no, no plan, no project can happen in that area that is not consistent with established community regulations, standards, as you guys set them. And what's very important is the statute, if you read on, it does allow, and again, this was done a long time ago, you know, there are many elements that have not been messed with in terms of the statute, and one of them was, way back when, they actually authorized urban renewal authorities to do design standards for projects that happen in the area. So usually what those would be is whatever standards you have set for the community, they would be higher than those, so they wouldn't be in conflict with, but you'll see in this plan and every plan I've ever written that says, but they have passed that back to you and said, no, this will remain your purview, your oversight. Okay, so I just wanted to assure you, we know things are always moving forward here, and this will have to always remain, and by saying that, it's kind of legally guaranteed to you all that they, the authority can't authorize something that's in conflict with the guiding documents that you all are in charge of. Okay? In terms of criteria for defining the area, and this will hopefully be, make sense now that I've given you a little bit of a heads up about things, but really Ryan and Patrick and other members said, okay, you know, step one is to say, what has the community said in terms of their objective for certain areas? And now let us combine that with our understanding based on discussions with private sector property owners, business owners, and our own observations, why certain things might not be happening. And you marry that, and that becomes the area that is first considered the survey area. What happens after that is that you can either take that area, you being the people that have been guiding this through the city process, you can either take that area and keep it the same for the plan area, or make it smaller. To make it bigger, and we're actually going to talk to you about that, or Ryan will at the, at the end here, is very difficult. This is one of the most linear processes in the world, and I pride myself on being the kind that can be flexible and adapt and, you know, bob and weave and all that, but in the urban renewal process, it's very linear because there's very specific reporting requirements. So picture this, we have 100 parcels, well, you guys actually have like 700 plus, but let's say we had 100 parcels, and we notify them the surveys being conducted, and then we prepare the survey, and we prepare the plan, we prepare the impact report, which has numbers that are all based on the value of the properties in the area and the acreage and the parcel count, and then somebody says, I want in. You literally go back and you have to notify them and kind of start things over. And so it's really good from a transparency standpoint, but it can be really difficult because it could just protract the process. So it's, it's good to take a good wide look at conditions because that's informative no matter what. It's not impossible, and actually, somebody did come forward in the 11th hour, and Ryan's going to talk to you. So, I mean, that's kind of affirming that what you're doing is being well-received by the private sector, and they see some application for themselves. And again, we, bob and weave and all that, but, but it is, it's a bit challenging. So what happened here is, the decision was made that what we learned, we did a pretty good job of defining that survey area. There's enough adverse conditions throughout this whole area that it probably makes sense to keep it as it is, as opposed to maybe reining it in. And, and that does happen. I can tell you instances where we've gone out and done the survey, and there's like, of the 11 factors in the statute, they're all kind of congregated in one area, and this is just kind of nothing, and they're like, well, that probably doesn't make any sense then. In this area, in this survey, it was, it was kind of everywhere, and again, it just speaks to the good sense of the people that work for the city. So that's, that's one of the criteria. Again, vision, presence of, of conditions, ownership, that's another thing. Many times, and I don't want to go too into the weeds with this unless you want me to, but sometimes you'll have an area that seems obvious, and maybe a few blocks away, there are city-owned property, and the city has a vision for a new fire station, right? And so while it kind of made sense because the factors were over here, but by just running a little farther and picking that up, you now can use urban renewal resources to help fund that. And so people have done that with parks and libraries and fire stations and things like that. So you'll see weird shapes every once in a while, but that's kind of the general rule of thumb, so ownership does play a factor. If there's imminent investment, and this is kind of what happened with what Ryan will mention, where there was an ask to come in, there's a project that came forward, consistent with what you guys want to accomplish, and they were not in the area and asked to be in, well, that makes sense, right? Because if it's a project you want, and they're worried about not making, not being able to make it financially, it probably makes sense now, rather than getting the plan approved and having to go through a big amendment and boundary change later. Again, you can see some of the other things, planning proposed capital investment, that actually drove quite a bit here as well. I think Ryan, especially as an ED guy, knowing, you know, there's some stuff out there, the big, bigger projects that are looking, and I know we're going to have to spend some serious money bringing infrastructure up to even make those possible. Again, that kind of tied into the timing and location and boundaries and all of that. Okay, so this, now I'm starting to focus in on the plan specifically. So there's a couple of major decisions that have to be made, and, and what this means is that, you know, if you took any one of our plans from any of our other communities, they, there's a certain amount that is very similar because the statute simply requires you add that kind of language, but then there are nuances that make it very much your plan. Some of the big decisions that have to be made, and some of these, well, all of these have been guiding us, they've been provided to us. So one is, as I mentioned, keep the plan area the same as the survey area. Another one is, when you get those big areas and they get so stretched out, and because you guys are dealing with a corridor, you know, it can get a long ways. And at some point, and, and you're, you know, the city was asking this, does it make sense to just have two areas? Because you can. Pueblo has like 12 urban renewal plan areas, and they're not connected, they're separate, and they're for different purposes. Denver has like 30, and, you know, I mean, there, it's just kind of all over the board. So the question was, does this make sense? I can tell you through this process, the decision was to keep it as one. The use of eminent domain or not, or, yeah, eminent domain. And that's always the juicy one for everybody, and always the fear, and we were told from the beginning, forget it, you know, it's not going to fly, not in our community, absolutely fine. So just because the statute allows, your plan is your plan, and you get to allow and not allow powers, controls, collection of certain revenues, all of that. So it becomes more your plan. One or more tax increment financing districts. Again, I won't, I won't go into the weeds, I can always come back and kind of do a training on this, but once you have the plan area, even within that, you can create little sub-areas where you're collecting this increment that's, that's, you know, providing the revenue to do these improvements. It doesn't have to be coterminous with the boundaries of the plan, you can make those little little subsets, too. The most common thing is just to make them coterminous, and that's been the decision here, too. The timing, sometimes communities put plans in place, but they don't start the TIF collection clock anymore, and since some of those last few legislative changes, it starts with adoption of the plan. Collection, interestingly, in Colorado, and I've done this in many, many states, in Colorado you can collect property tax increment, but you also have the option to collect municipal sales tax increment. You cannot collect any sales tax from the county, you can collect property tax, but you cannot, any new sales tax would continue to flow to the county. And the way we've written it in this plan is that the property tax absolutely will be collected, it has to, or there's kind of no point in doing this. And sales tax is available, but on a project-by-project basis. So if somebody's coming in, they need to prove to the authority and to council that they can't get it done with just property tax increment. Now, those projects tend to be really big projects, and the vast majority of what you guys do, I mean, you might do some, you know, fairly sizable projects, but, you know, ideally, you're also going to have a lot of smaller projects, downtown buildings, facade improvements, you know, apartment projects, things like that. And so it's going to have to be something really big and that generates sales, where they're going to have to make the argument that we're going to need a little bit more of that, but it'll all be considered on a case-by-case basis. Let's see, resources, the discussions with the taxing entities, do, you know, are you all in? Do you need to hold back some of what would otherwise be captured to make yourselves whole? That's another decision. And then finally, and this is really for the life of the plan, is as projects come to you, and not every project that happens in the area will need that kind of financial assistance, but as they come to the authority board, and once you guys have said, yes, we can entitle something like this, it's consistent, you know, with our plans and our regulations and that, is this a project that we really need to or want to provide funding assistance for? And that will be the job for the next 25 years, which is the life of the TIF. So the major plan elements are the introduction, the plan intentions, relationship to the comp plan, undertakings and activities, project financing, and severability. Okay. So just to remind you all, the boundaries of this area are everything within the dark purple line. And really what the intention is, is to avoid single-family detached residential, because this is not about that. This is, as Ryan said, this is very much a commercial, industrial, and kind of an investment property kind of idea, as well as, so, you know, it goes along the corridor. So it's really picking up those properties in use and zoning. But also, you'll have vacant areas, but where the intention is for those kinds of uses, you'll also, though, you'll see, sometimes you have to connect those areas by a right-of-way, a trail system, railroad tracks, whatever is kind of a recognized kind of connector. You'll sometimes just include those public improvements, again, so that you can make these resources available to help making, make improvements on those. So sometimes you'll see it just within a right-of-way and not including the properties. And I can tell you that's true on First, as we were kind of going south, because the other part of this of the map is, you know, kind of the tail of the dog, really, is going down near Dawson Ranch. And you can see over on the right there where it narrows, there were, you know, there was a great, great efforts were made not to include the single-family residential, again, you know, so they don't have to worry, and because this isn't a resource that makes any sense for them. But to make sure you've connected the area, but also that if improvements need to be made over time, and you can see even the very end of the tail here, that's all about making sure that resources can be put to those things for public improvements that benefit that area and the whole community. Very quick statistics on this area, it's 751 parcels, it's about 1,300 acres. 433, or over half of the parcels, are less than half an acre in size. 554 properties have an improvement, meaning some sort of vertical structure on them. Almost 200 properties lack an improvement, and that's properties with a quantifiable value. And basically, what I'm, I just have to caveat everything, is like, if you pull up a whole bunch of records from the assessors, sometimes there's missing information, you know, that happens all the time. So I always want to be very accurate in what I'm saying. So there was about 200 that didn't have an improvement value. So most of those are probably vacant, some might be little misses, you know, by the assessor, no big deal, but just to kind of give you a sense. The vast majority of the owners live in Canyon City. 11% of the owners reside outside of the state. When you look at an assessor's record, they'll have zoning, but they'll also have a use classification. The uses that they classified all fell within these categories, agricultural, commercial exempt, residential, industrial, and vacant. And again, with residential, what I say there is that could be multifamily residential, that's still income-producing, so this can still be a beneficial tool for them. So that's there, so, you know, it kind of includes that whole category of residential. And then finally, 87% of the properties are classified as either commercial or central business. And I think that's really a good gut check, kind of a ground-truthing for what Ryan was saying earlier, that this was really intended to help commercial and industrial buildings. And just that quick check is like, okay, I think, I think we defined this right. Future use designations, this really relates back to your future land use map that you included in your 2001 condition, or comprehensive plan. And basically, we just want to be able to report back to you, another kind of ground-truth or gut check, is that all of the area that's included in this, you know, proposed boundary is, as according to your future land use map, knowing it'll be updated, is either commercial, industrial, mixed-use, residential, multifamily, public, semi-public, and undeveloped. Again, the residential was a very small portion, and it really leaned more towards a higher density. So again, kind of an additional gut check and protection that this should be advancing your objectives for those kinds of properties. While you guys received this survey, and while it's really not something we're supposed to discuss tonight, because we're really supposed to stay focused on the plan, I at least wanted you to know that based on the survey we did, there are, as we say, there are 11 factors of blight that you're supposed to, you know, see if those are present and report on in the condition survey. And of those, of the 11, we, 10 were present somewhere within the area, and they had to be at, you know, if it was just one adverse condition on the far west side, you know, that doesn't seem reasonable, you know? We have some discretion here. But what we say there is that they were at varying degrees, but all at a level of intensity that they're going to have a financial impact. So, you know, that's why they were recognized. In terms of the plan purpose, again, can always read this in more detail, the two things you need to know, as the statute says, if you're going to create an area like this, the two first priorities have to be, and this is any city in Colorado, has to be, number one, eliminate and mitigate those adverse conditions that exist within the area, and number two is to advance the plans, the policy documents and community plans that have been established. That's one and two, no matter what. You can say other things like, we want to encourage workforce housing, we want to help with public art, we want to not raise taxes and use this money to complete capital improvement projects on Main Street. You know, you can do all those things, but no matter what, those first two things have to be your first priority. In terms of approach, basically, what this says is that they're going, they, the Urban Renewal Authority, are going to work together with the other boards and commissions of the city, as well as those other taxing entities and other partnerships that might come forward to encourage development, redevelopment, and again, most importantly, buy private enterprise. Now, what that means is, the revenue that will be generated for this area to capitalize these improvements and assist these private projects that might come forward is all private development, it's all private interest. It's the net new money that would get spent in this area after the plan is adopted. You all then, you as a community, can use that, again, to keep leveraging that and bringing more private interest in investing and reinvesting in their properties. You can also use that to make public improvements, because as we know, you know, just look at your downtown, you can tell, you know, where you guys have said, this is a priority, sidewalks and ADA requirements and widening the sidewalk and having amenity area, I mean, you can exactly see what your plan is and how you're implementing it, and where it begins and ends, and that's absolutely perfect. That's the perfect example of making an improvement in the public realm for the betterment of the economic development environment beyond it, the businesses beyond it. So you get to do the same thing here. And then in terms of implementation, and I already mentioned it to you, this is where we're saying that they're authorized by the statute, they, the authority, to, within this area, take on some of the roles that would otherwise go to you, but the way we wrote the plan is to say, we will not, we, I'm not the authority, but they will not do that. That will all remain within your purview. Every project that was going to happen with or without this will continue to come to you for consideration and evaluation. And the bottom line is, any new development activity in this area will have to be consistent with those policies and those regulations that you guys oversee. In terms of those references, and I mentioned them, you know, again, I won't read them to you, but just to let you know, the ones I said I pulled into the body of the plan to make sure, you know, for us, they were all very consistent, which is good, and they seem to be your most current thinking and your most current list of intentions. So we referenced those, we had the strategic plan, the vision plan, the strategic plan, and then the US-50 corridor plan. So those are the ones we pulled in. And I'm sure you noticed others, many, many references, including to your comp plan, are in the appendix. And then in terms of plan powers, they sound kind of funny, but they're mostly, again, because these are statutory things, but the bottom line is, is that the plan and the statute allows certain activities to happen in the area. In fact, they encourage them. And so they kind of fall within these categories of, they can, you know, allow someone to demolish something, they could even provide assistance to get rid of a structure that might pose some sort of a health danger or something like that. They can acquire property, not at a favorable rate, but at a market rate, if somebody's selling and they want to acquire, you know, arm's length, they can participate in that or, you know, stand behind a private interest that's acquiring property. Install public improvements, eliminate unsafe conditions, again, prevention of or spread of deterioration, that's the whole mitigating adverse conditions. Enter into agreements with different entities. They can even help people relocate. If a business said, yeah, this is happening here, and, you know, I'm fine with it, but I'm ready to move, and I want to move my business here, and if that's in the interest of the community, they can provide assistance for that. They can use the power of eminent domain, but in this plan, it is not allowed. Again, this became a really kind of silly, well, I shouldn't say silly, but there was great angst and money and time and lawyer's hours spent defining what is an urban renewal project. So anyway, all the attorneys love it when we include this. Basically, it means everything I just said to you. It just means that it is allowable to spend money on streetlights, just like it is to help somebody redo the facade of their candy store. Okay? I mean, that's it. But somebody felt the need to be very specific and document that, so we provide that. And then this page and the next page, what we do is, we're always trying, just like I can tell you guys have done with all of your plans, you know, I said they were all consistent, they build on each other. So, too, was our attempt to link the three documents, the survey, the plan, and the impact reports. So what we did is, we pulled in the factors that we found, those 10 of the 11 factors, and we offered some explanation of how the presence of that could be mitigated. It doesn't require that the authority do that, they're just suggested improvements, so people understand, what does that mean, deteriorated or deteriorating structures? Well, it can mean that you have a structure that is unsafe, or it's endangering people, they've got to board it up, it just means that can be taken away. So we just want to offer some clarity to terms that sometimes, you know, it escapes people what the wording is. So we include those as just possibilities. And then, this is it. Okay. So last slide, you saw the three phases, you saw that we're all the way through, and the, we're here, is it the fifth today? It's the fourth?
No, it's the fourth.
Did I do that right? Okay. Somebody just on the phone told me I had the wrong day. Anyway, so we're here, that's the fourth. The next important date is March 16, and that's when council will open the public hearing for consideration and adoption of the urban renewal plan. They can either make a decision that night and then close the public hearing, or they can say, you know, somebody couldn't show up and wants to, and will continue it to a next date. All the statute says is, you have to make a decision within 120 days. And if you don't make a decision in 120 days, you can't consider establishing an urban renewal area with these properties for two years. So they just kind of say, you know, do it, if you're going to do it, do it, if you're not, you're done, you can't even think about it for two years. And that's it.
That 120 day starts February 17 or March 4?
March 16. It'll start March 16, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. That's only happened to me once, too. It was really weird. So that's it, guys, this is questions, and I know that was fast and a fire hose and all of that, but...
Before you move on to questions, I do want to mention, you know, Ann mentioned an amendment to the plan. Vicky Pullen, who's been here before, Planning Commission before, correct, Patrick, has asked to be included in the plan as well, so her property over at Central and Fields, she would like to include that as part of the plan, and we've, you know, we've made some right-of-way adjustments to the plan to include her property. So when we take this to council, there will be a revised map, a revised legal description including those properties.
And just so you know, since I brought it up, how, you know, I told you how hard it is to start over, we asked her, we said, you're going to have to waive your right to notification of the survey and the plan, and, you know, it'd be silly of her not to when she came forward and voluntarily wanted to be included, but she provided written documentation, signed letter, so we at least checked that box to make sure we were in conformity with the statute.
The other thing I want to say is, you know, not only do we have people coming asking to be included in the plan, we've received letters of support from Ferris C. Ford, the developers of St. Scholastica, developers of the St. Cloud and all the unbridled properties. In addition to, I spoke to the controller at Interroll, where they see this as a benefit that could, you know, potentially benefit them in the future as well, which is why we included the industrial property down by Dawson Ranch.
All right, thank you. Let's, who has some questions?
This is really comprehensive.
So just, businesses that you mentioned, they said that they would like to be part of the plan, and that lady came in the 11th hour, so I'm just curious, like, how did you guys, he's waving his hands out.
So I'm just curious, how did you guys determine, like, the area? I mean, what was your thought behind that?
Yeah, so the thought was, you know, including basically all the contiguous portions of commercial, industrial, central business district along Highway 50, and then we looked at the arteries that came off of Highway 50. So going down Ninth Street, including the industrial area over at Eighth Street, you know, all of these areas were, you know, kind of fit together and were pretty natural there. Justice Center Drive is, you know, another example, you've got a lot of commercial properties that go down that direction. We, you know, we went up the right-of-way to include St. Scholastica because we knew that there were financial gaps there, and again, when you're looking at blight in a community, and you look at what the conditions of St. Scholastica were, you know, just a year ago, 18 months ago, and St. Cloud's... know, just a year ago, 18 months ago, and Saint Cloud's another example, where you have these properties that have been vacant for many years, you know, tools like this, having them in place could have helped accelerate some of those projects so they happen faster, and that, that's really the goal. And we, we looked at all of the areas that could benefit the most, and that, that was, you know, the, the concentration of the industrial, commercial, central business district zoned areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, I, I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, so I'm just curious about the, the tax piece. How does, how does that work? What is that? Can you describe that in really layman terms?
Yes. I brought it, put it behind the slide so, you know, I can hide it. Okay, there we go. And then, how does the plan...
You can start from, you can go to the slideshow and start from this slide.
There we go. So this is a really simple illustration of a really complex concept. I'm going to start reading with my arms, but, but hopefully I can say, explain it. So what would happen is, if council decides to adopt the plan, let's just say March 16th, every odd year, the assessor goes out and he values properties, right? We all get a card. And yes, I know that there are inner mirrors now that they do, but the bottom line is your property, all the properties in this area, everywhere in Colorado, every other year, the out-of-year, they go out and they do a general reassessment and you find out one as well. That was done in 19, and 2019, and so those values are there, they're in place. So what we did is, like, we built a spreadsheet of all the parcels, the 751, and we have all the information from the assessor, and let's say on March 16th, they go ahead and decide to adopt this plan. The aggregate value of everything in that area, all the properties in that area, is unknown, and... Oh, sorry, thank you. So the aggregate total values of all those parcels, it's like taking that spreadsheet, 751, sum that, you get a number. That is what's called the base. So it's just, it could be one, it could be 1,000, whatever it is. So that sets the base. And then what, how increment works is, it says that any new investment or reinvestment, that can be anything for which the assessor is going to charge you more. You're going to pay more for that new investment, not if they go up, not, not appreciation, which I always call like natural increase, because, you know, sometimes your, your house is here, two years later you get a bill and all of a sudden it was worth 400,000, now it's worth 420,000. Well, that's a general, that's a natural increase. So they take that out, the natural increase, and everything over that, that is new investment in the area, that's the amount that comes back to the authority to get reinvested. So what'll happen is, and I've got several projects like this going right now, but let's just take a, a local example. So this gets set, and, well, let's take the apartment project. So we've got our base, and let's say you guys approve her apartment project in the next six months, and then let's say it takes her another eight months to build it, okay? So we're probably just about to the next reassessment period, right? So the assessor's going to go out and he's going to look at all the properties like he always did. He's going to figure out the natural increase, okay? And that natural increase, that new money, goes to all the taxing entities, so, you know, they're not robbed of that. But the amount that she spent building that apartment project, that was just brand-new investment, right? It's that portion that is increment that can, that, that begins to, to go into a fund from the county to the authority, and it's those resources that then can be reinvested back into this area. So sometimes I think of it as like a reward for investment. So let me give you an example of, of from that developer's perspective. So she couldn't make this project work without some level of assistance. So let's say that, these are really arbitrary numbers, but let's say that by building her project, she has now added $100,000 of revenue to the area because she's paid those taxes. She can't close the gap, but let's say her gap on putting the project over the finish line was 50,000, right? So the authority would say, "We will either reimburse all of that 50,000 or some portion," but what they're doing is, she still has to pay her taxes, but some portion of that will be pulled out and given back to her to meet her debt service on the project. So that's why I think of it sometimes as a reward for investment. And how that pool grows is that, let's say the person who owns the property, I mean, that's a bad example because it's very residential, but if this happened in downtown and the person next to her wanted to put a rooftop restaurant, let's say, and they put all these improvements in and they had to sprinkle her the building now and all this thing, well, let's say that they now, because of that investment, are paying X amount, but their numbers work. They, you know, they could go to the bank and the bank would say, "Yeah, based on the additional people you're going to serve and your food sales and your liquor sales, if you have those or whatever, yeah, definitely, you, you can afford to do this." They're not going to come to the authority for assistance. That's still net new investment, and that's how you start to, to build that fund, because only a fraction of the people in these areas will, will need it, and, and others won't, and, and some just won't want it, you know? And, and usually that's just because of a lack of understanding. I mean, the people in this community and the education that's been done to date, they seem to really get it. And then there'll still be projects that come forward for assistance that, you know, you guys enti, you know, you're like, "Yeah, yeah, but, you know, we're not excited about it, you know, it's not great. I mean, it's not inconsistent, but it's not really advancing our community objectives," and the authority can say, "No," and they'll just have to go somewhere else. So I think it's really important to remember, TIF, Tax Increment Financing, and the resources of the authority are always intended to be the last money in. They still have to go to the bank and get the primary loan, and, and maybe their parents, and maybe their trust fund, and, and maybe some investment pool. It's just pushing them over. It's that little bit that, that they couldn't close the gap on. That's really what TIF is intended to be.
Thank you. That was extremely helpful.
Oh, good.
Easy to understand, too. Thank you.
Good.
Did you have a question?
Well, actually, my question was the same as DeeDee's question.
Okay.
But it's a little bit, it says in the summary here, you know, I think you answered the question where it says the URA, which is the Urban Renewal Authorities, would freeze the current property tax levels at the current established taxation, then collect the annual incremental increase as a tool, and that's what you just said.
Except the freeze part, and, and I'm so glad you brought, are you reading that from...
Yeah, I'm reading, I'm reading from the summary, so he says, "Freeze it," but how long does that freeze it for?
Okay, so, and, and hopefully I didn't say freeze, but it's an establish, and, and I know that sounds silly, but that's super important. And, and the reason is, when we had an informational meeting last month, a gentleman from the Fire District showed up, and he had brought in this newsletter that had been written by the editor of the Special Districts Association for Colorado, and he used the term "freeze," and that is a term that used to be used, and, and here's the difference. If it was truly frozen, then even the natural increase, you know, when I said your house went from 400 to 420,000 every other year, then, then the, the amount that that taxing entity was getting on March 16th would be the same, you know, from 2020 to 2035, right? Because frozen would mean frozen, and that's not true. It's not, because that natural increase will always continue to go to the taxing entities. It's just the amount over that for the brand-new investment or reinvestment in the property. So in terms, so that's very important. And, and we sent him the statute and explained that, that it happens all the time. People misrepresent, and there's so many little nuances. Some do it deliberately, many do it accidentally, but that's why I'm like anal about terms. But to answer your other question is, the TIF can last for 25 years, according to the statute. It doesn't have to, but it can, but then it ends. Downtown development authorities that are kind of similar to urban renewal authorities, but very restricted to your downtown area, they can run 30 years, and then they can even be extended beyond that. They can also, though, assess an additional mill, so those kinds of things. That's why those, approval of a DDA, that's called a DDA, they have to go to a vote of the people because that is an increase in taxes. People often say, "Well, when you create an urban renewal authority, how can that just be something that council can decide? Well, the great news is, they can't raise your taxes, that's why." So it's just capturing taxes, it's not increasing. If authorities, and they never will be, I assure you in Colorado, but if they were, then it would go to a vote of the people, as it should, you know, if they're going to increase somebody's taxes, but this does not do that.
So what words should we use instead of freeze? Because freeze is in the summary.
Interesting. Okay, so it establishes the base.
Okay.
So it's just a starting point.
Okay.
But thank you.
One thing that, I sat in the first presentation, so one thing that came up was from the Fire Department.
Yeah.
Was that these entities can negotiate a portion of this.
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's happening right now. That's what, after we finished those impact reports, we, we kind of tried to get those done as quickly as possible so that Ryan and Corey, you know, your attorney in that, could go out and say, you know, "This is what we're estimating for revenue, and this is what we've estimated for, you know, if, if there is a cost to you from this. Do you agree with those numbers? Do, do you have something extraordinary you wanted to do in this area that if some of that was held back, that would make that possible?" You know, that's that negotiation, and that's happening now. So when, when the hearing starts on the 16th, Ryan and Corey will probably be bringing forward those agreements. Here's the agreement with Library, here's the agreement with SAN, here's, you know, all of those to make sure council knows that, that, again, they were compliant.
Okay. Right, it's kind of quiet, so...
It was pretty thorough.
Patrick, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
No? Okay. Ryan?
Nope. As Ann said, we're, we're in the negotiating period now. We'll be meeting with Fire District on Monday, the county on Tuesday, and several other meetings throughout.
Okay. Well, if there's no further discussion, I will close this public hearing. Do I need a, Patrick, do we need a, we need a motion in a second to adopt the resolution?
Yes, sir.
Do we also need a motion in a second for recommendation to City Council?
Well, the, the resolution is what we will take to City Council as Planning Commission's affirmation that you conducted the hearing and that you're in support of this.
Okay. So at this time, I need a motion in a second to adopt Resolution 01, 2020.
I can make a motion. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 01, Series of 2020. Do I need to read the paragraph, the, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city, of Canyon City, Colorado, recommending the approval of the Canyon City area for reinvestment expansion urban renewal plan?
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Shagley? Yeah. Commissioner Shagley?
Your mic's on.
No. Sorry. I marked the wrong one. Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Jeez. Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Commissioner Shagley?
Aye.
Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Okay, resolution is adopted and on to City Council. Thank you very much for the presentation.
I will be giving you a call tomorrow to have you come and sign the resolution.
Sure, I'll be around. Patrick, anything else? Anything coming up we need to know about?
I'd just like to let the Planning Commission know that last Thursday, we held an informational question and answer meeting with potential vendors on the update for our comprehensive plan, as well as our zoning subdivision and development regulations. We got a far better response than I thought we were going to get between the people who were calling in and those who came in attendance. We had about a dozen potential vendors, so we're, we're very encouraged by that. The submission deadline for proposals is going to be March 30th, and once we get the, the established, who, who has in fact submitted bids and proposals, we're probably going to be putting together a committee of both Planning Commission and staff to evaluate these, maybe help us with interviews of these, these various vendors. So I just wanted to give you an update that this process appears to be going fairly well.
Great.
And we did receive grant funding from DOLA to help with the project.
Great.
That's, that's nice to hear. All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.